Good evening, this is the Monday, February 26th edition of the Clinton Public Schools School Committee meeting. We'll start with an approval of the bills, can I have a motion to accept the bills?
Can I make that motion?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So moved, is, are, is there any discussion on the bills? There being none, all those in favor? unanimous, thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of February 12th?
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the minutes of February 12th? There being none, all those in favor? unanimous. Do we have student rep tonight?
There will be a blood drive held at CHS on Friday, March 9th. An arts night will be held at CHS on Wednesday, February 28th. Arts projects will be on display and there will be musical entertainment. Congratulations to the CHS cheerleaders who won the midwatch league competition and will compete in the Massachusetts Regional Meet on Sunday, March 4th in Holyoke. The first robotics team will be competing this week at WPI. And congratulations to the CHS seniors who were awarded with the Leprechaun Society Scholarship. They will be recognized this Saturday night at the town hall. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Do we have anyone from the PTA here tonight? Special needs pack.
Good evening. Wednesday night, we will be having our paint night. We had to reschedule due to the snow from a few weeks ago. And we are also going ahead with our autism awareness pins that we're making. And our forms will be going out to all the schools and the administration offices starting in about a week and a half. And that's about it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anything from the CTA tonight?
Nothing.
Thank you. Is there any public comment tonight? Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, I understand we have a first competition coming up.
Yeah, WPI. This weekend, I think we have some people here to talk to us.
We have some, some folks here representing first? Hi there.
Hi.
You guys ready to power up, is that what it is?
Yes. It is. So this year's game is called Power Up. The object of the game is to score points by taking control of a larger seesaw looking device called a scale, or a smaller one called a switch. It's a time-based game, the longer you have control, the more points you get. And at the end, the object of the game is to hang off of the center structure.
So this year, we have a really great group of kids, as always. So we have, you know, a diverse group of kids, kids that are involved in many other activities. We've got a range from freshmen to seniors. And so this weekend, we'll be going to WPI. And on the 20, 25th, we'll be going to Bryant University in Rhode Island. In late April, we will be going to Detroit for the championships.
And in conclusion, we'd like to thank the continuous support of the, this committee board. And a special thanks to Ms. Sepantis for her participation in our mini-first competition, where she was a judge, and Mr. Ed DuVall for his continued support through, and extensive support through the program with Mr. Morrison and many of us, we've all seen him as a mentor. And we'd just like to express our endured thanks with some honorary member t-shirts. That would be like, that's our deal.
Thank you.
You guys want help too?
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'll wear it proudly, thank you.
I told you, no sleeves on. Thank you.
I love that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck with all of your endeavors. Thank you, not only to our students and our coordinators, but to all of the community mentors that have made this program such a wonderful success over the years. And now, on to one of our favorite parts of what, why we do what we do, recognition of Students of the Month and Employees of the Month.
So we might want to start with the, probably the high school this, this month, and we'll work our way down if these available. All right.
I'd like to have Mr. McKillop come up here with. We're going to, I'm going to ask Mr. McKillop to present our Student of the Month. He is one of our teachers, works closely with her, and he's going to say a nice few kind, nice words about our recipient.
So I came up with three things for Ashleigh Nembou for Student of the Month. First, in a display of self-motivation, independence initiative, she entered into a MIAA essay contest. Was recognized as having one of the better essays for that. Also, showed poise, self-assurance and energy in emceeing the spirit week in front of the entire high school. That's pretty cool. And then just in my class, Ashleigh's a mainstay. And I'll just give you an example of this. We begin a three lesson vocabulary cycle, and so for each lesson, there's a quiz, one of which she swore low on. And it all culminates in a vocabulary test, which is all three of those vocabulary lessons, in which she received one of her better grades, and I congratulate her for that. And she said, "I got smoked on one of those quizzes, and I'm determined to never let that happen again, so I've really been studying." So her reaction to setbacks is spot on. And so, for her caring and just her giggly nature, she's a Student of the Month.
Also, she was also involved in the student council and the, in the blood drive, and she knows a way to get blood out of you. I really congratulate her. But also, as we, as we recognize her this evening, and we will ask her in a second to come up forward, I also want to congratulate her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Nembou. Ashleigh's the third of their three daughters, and each and every one of them have been very special addition to Clinton High School. And what they've given to Clinton High School and the support of the parents is something we appreciate sincerely and is very admirable, so thank you as well. Ash, if you could come forward, please. Guys are sweaty.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, I'm coming.
Yep. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Oh, whoa, this is big too.
Yeah.
We're here to recognize tonight a fifth grade student who has been recommended on a couple of occasions now for her helpfulness in the classroom, for her willingness always to work to the best of her ability. She works hard, but when she's working hard, she's also willing to help others. Her teachers see that she likes things to be done in a certain way, and when she does that, it really adds to the class. And it has made a big difference in her science, in math class with Ms. Colmore, and her reading ELA social studies with Mrs. Light. And they wanted to make sure that Ella was recognized for her, not only her high achieving, but her personality and helpfulness to everyone. So we would like to call Ella Aspen up to the table tonight.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Ella. Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. And from the elementary school, Mr. Rulo.
We have a young lady who's in the third grade, came to us from a different country, has come to us here in Clinton about several years ago. She, we look at her DRA scores, her DRAs is a reading assessment that we give each year. This young lady scored one of the highest that we've created, I was going to have, in improvement. She went from a second grade level at the beginning of this year in September, to a beginning of a third grade level already. So she's already embarked on a one-year growth in, in four months that we've been here. She's a hard-working young lady, she works with our ESL department also, and she's a sponge when it comes, they tell me, to learning everything she can learn. She's a perfect candidate that we have for the Student of the Month, and we are very proud to, to honor her, and her name is Lena DeLevere. And so Laura is, Laura is going to be here, and her mom, and we want to thank her mom for being an advocate for her, and Laura has done a fabulous job with us, and we want to congratulate her.
Good job. Congratulations.
Congratulations. She's got her bag too. Laura's back. One more.
In addition to our Students of the Month, we also have the, the great fortune to recognize one individual out of, out of many as the Employee of the Month, so Dr. Meyer?
Yeah, we're going to turn it over to, Mr. Rulo for our Employee of the Month.
So when we were asked for the staff member Employee of the Month, we, we thought long and hard, what epitomizes the idea of what we are, of course, the school district. It is not an easy choice, because to me, there are many great educators and staff members here in the entire school district. But we, Megan and I, we wanted to make sure that the person who we are is a model to our students and a model to our, the adults that are in this. So tonight, we want to bring up our Crystal Plum. Crystal is a grade three teacher. She is, we transferred Crystal from grade one after many years, so everybody who understands that's a difficult thing to take place right away. This past year, she's instilled a level of teamwork in children to the third grade. She's an advocate for the children. And although she did state that learning the curriculum has been the greatest challenge for her, to me, it is also her ability to strive and be the best that she can be, that makes her the perfect model and the choice for the Employee of the Month. We want to thank Crystal for all that she's done, and we are, we are there. A few notes that I see oftentimes from Ms. Silvio on her desk, talk about all the work that Crystal has done in order to make the third grade and the transition a perfect place. So from us to you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You got a bag too. Don't let me chase you. And so before we go into the superintendent's report, I would like to just, do you, do you need a picture of all of the?
I got them.
You got them? Okay. So ladies and gentlemen and, and students, we would invite you to stay, but we would not be offended in the least if you chose to, to leave.
You can go out and all get some pictures taken by the administration or something for social media, or you're welcome to stay.
And congratulations once again, and thank you for all of your good efforts. Mr. Superintendent?
All right, so the first thing on the agenda was a strategic plan update, and really that's just, I know all of you were at that meeting, so we won't go too in depth, but, but just for anyone who's watching, we did our strategic planning committee, met today, our first meeting at 5:30 this afternoon in the Clinton High School cafeteria. And we had about 36, 37 people there, who, you know, it's teachers, parents, community members, town officials, school committee, our administrators. And really, we started, the big purpose of today was to kind of talk about the goal of the strategic plan, to start reviewing our district's mission statement, vision statement and core values, and sort of talk about our plan moving forward to the next, next meeting. So, you know, I think we got some, some good feedback in there on those statements, hopefully kick that process off, off well, and we'll, we'll keep working at it.
That was a great start.
The next thing I had here was the district goals, it's a mid-year update, so I apologize, there's a couple of handouts you got this evening, because of the vacation, we were a little delayed on getting some, I was delayed on getting some packet material together. So the one that is a giant stapled packet is the mid-year goals update. So if you remember, we had four, four goals. First one was around the, as a district, first one was on educator evaluation. One of the things I tried to capture here is the, that table or that, that bar graph, I guess, is the, shows a number of recorded forms and teach point. So you can actually see how many, you know, formative assessments have been done, how many self-assessments have been done, all that type of stuff. So I think, you know, the numbers show that, that we're making significant progress on completing these forms. And I think that, you know, I think in the past, we weren't really doing even the, the mid-year formative assessments, really at all for developing educators. So the fact that we have a lot of those formative assessment reports already done for those developing educators is, is a, is very step, step in the right direction. So I tried to give a little update on, on where we are in that goal. Then I, also after the first couple pages of the goal, then I, I attached a couple artifacts. You can see the slides. Those are from the professional development we did on August 29th around the educator evaluation system. And then right after the end of those slides, there's an evaluation peer review protocol. And I think that that was just, that was a neat thing that we did as a, in an admin meeting, was we had, all our administrators brought an example of an observation that they had done, and they brought an observation, a, a sample of a formative evaluation they had, a formative assessment they had done, excuse me. And we actually kind of shared them, and as we shared them, the, the observers were looking for the CEIJR, basically Claim Evidence, Impact, Judgment and Recommendations. So, so we tried to identify those and really tried to say, you know, what would you take out of this observation, and really try to reflect on that. So I think not only are we, I guess the reason I wanted to include that, it's like not only are we trying to, to make sure that we are being compliant with the educator evaluation system, we're trying to make sure that the, the observations and the feedback we're giving are meaningful to help, help everyone grow and improve.
And I will say that as a, as a principal, it's incredibly valuable for me to have that calibration with my colleagues, to know if I'm seeing the same things that they're seeing when we walk into classrooms. So I commend the administrative team for, for taking this step.
And that kind of goes into Goal Two. Goal Two, we talked about well-structured lessons, and we wanted to see high expectations indicated through clearly articulated measurable objectives, as evidenced by learning walk data. So the learning walks, really the way we started those this year was, the, the first one we did was all of the, sorry, the first round we did was just by building. So we did just like the high school, I went with the high school administration, I went with the middle school administration, I went with the elementary. Then the second round we did, we did one with the, all the principals at the, at the elementary school, and then one with all the assistant principals at the middle school. So we went and we've, and we've done that, and that really is that calibration, where we are all actually in the exact same room together, and we're able to look at what we see, and we document, like what did we see evidence of? We have a kind of a rubric or a continuum that we're looking at, and trying to see what, what evidence did we see. It's not connected to the educator evaluation, evaluation system, those things are not directly related to, you know, whenever we come in as a group of administrators into a classroom, that's not part of the evaluation system. That's just part of us gathering data, sample from the school, of where we think we are, and us sort of calibrating amongst ourselves. And our goal is, as we go through the year, to invite more teachers into that process. Probably our next round, try to get some CTA leadership and some maybe department chairs involved, to kind of get involved in that, in that as well. I just think it's kind of, you know, so far, you know, we've got a small sample size, we visited 20 classrooms in these learning walks. So the, of those, we've got 80, 80% of them have, have shown this, have, have shown that they met the clearly articulated measurable objectives. But I think it's important to note that we did a professional development day on, on November 9th, focused on this, and then the learning walks that occurred after November 9th, although it was only six classrooms, it was a small sample size, all of them showed it, it was 100% after that. So we're hoping that as we continue with them in the spring, we'll continue to see that, that type of, that type of work. So then there's some summaries about, you know, the, the different ways that this being implied in each individual school. Different things as far as the, you know, the can-do statements, those types of things. And then I did share, after that, there's the agenda and protocol that we used, and the lesson plan template that we kind of used during the November 9th professional development day, if you wanted to see that. And after that, there's sort of a quick summary of the summary statements that we made from our learning walks. It shows the five dates, kind of who went on them and what some of our summary statements were. It doesn't have any teacher names, doesn't have any reference to what classrooms we really went into, because that's really not part of it. Like I said, it's not to evaluate the teachers, it's to kind of just get a snapshot of us as a, as a school. Goal Three, we're talking about meeting, 100% teachers will be able to provide evidence in meeting diverse needs by providing differentiated interventions or enhancements for students based on assessment data. So really, this has been a culmination of a lot of our PD on October 18th, November 9th and January 31st. The 18th, we really looked at MCAS results, we got those in just in the nick of time to do that. November 9th, when we looked at planning lessons, one of the things they're supposed to do is plan those lessons based on areas of concern from the MCAS results, even if it was a lesson you're not going to teach till February, if it was a, if it was an area of concern, can we, can we work together and plan a lesson to better teach that maybe in the future? And on January 31st, and I talked about that, I think at the last meeting a little bit, we also looked at data, whether it was mid-year benchmark assessment data, or midterm grades, or anything like that, and tried to actually create individual student success plans, individual student support forums, which we created through Google, Google forums, and we had about, over 200 of those created, or about 11% of our population, that we, we created those, those forums, which I thought was, was pretty good. And initially tying into this goal is the win block implementation at the elementary school, win block implementation at the middle school. So I think you can see that there's, you know, I think we're, we're well on our way in making progress towards that, that goal. I did it then, some artifacts here, they have the agenda for the October 18th PD Day and the January 31st PD Day, and then you can see a sample of the Google forums that they completed, not only their individual student support forums, but also their own reflection and adjustment to practice forum. The last one is a student engagement one, and I think that's probably the one that we, that, you know, I, if I classified the first statement, I said, "We've just started formally addressing the school." I think this one's probably the one that we're a little bit furthest behind in as far as a formal, formally looking at this. The only real professional development day we had, it was December 22nd. And what we started doing at that day, we did look at a lot of, read a couple articles, looked at a couple different videos, tried to get some feedback into maybe potential revisions for the handbook, had teachers kind of reflect on their own practice, and maybe things they might be able to change in their, in their classroom to tie to address different things like anxiety, or trauma, or biases, those type of things. So, you know, I gave, you know, there's a quick overview here of some of the things that are done, and then there is the agenda from the December 22nd Professional Development Day, and sort of the, the PD reflection and the reflections from the literature. So, so I just, you know, this isn't obviously not a, it's just sort of, the purpose of this report is just sort of a mid-year check-in. You know, we talk about goals in the beginning of the year, and sometimes you talk about goals and, and they're almost, you know, you set goals and great, and then they're sort of forgotten. So this was just sort of our, you know, our way of, of updating the committee and the public about the work we're, we're taking towards these, and, and we'll continue to work on them and provide more of an end-of-the-year update at the, at the end of the year. But I also think, and I also think it's important, I did try to tie in a lot of the professional development in here, so that people see that, you know, I know sometimes for parents, half days are frustrating, and days when kids have a random day off of school, and why are they doing all that stuff? There's a lot of stuff that we're trying to do to make those days productive as well, so, and they are, they are aligned to our goals and what we're trying to accomplish. So I think that's, that's the purpose of the update, so I don't know if you have any, I know I just sprung this all on you guys, haven't had a chance to read through it, but if you have any questions, off the top of your head, I'll certainly do my best to answer.
Any questions? Great work, thank you.
All right. So the FY '19 budget update. So the first thing I put there is a staffing change proposal. So I remember at the last meeting, I talked about, we were going to look at our staffing and try to come up with a few things. So one of the things I handed out to you, it's a one-pager right here, that says, proposed staff changes. So the top three are three things that we came up with in terms of trying to eliminate some money from the budget. So where are we right now? If you remember, we were at an increase to the town of about 4.97%. Our goal is to get that into the threes, so that it's hopefully something manageable that we can, you know, stand behind and move forward with. The, so 1% out of a budget, our budget is about $220,000. So if we're trying to get from about a, you know, under four to under three, we got, we get at least $220,000 out of the budget. So we looked at these, these first three positions. The first one in the preliminary budget, if you remember, we were adding a position, called a career vocational guidance counselor, that was going to be between the middle school and the high school. If we eliminated that position from the preliminary budget, is moving forward, that's a savings of $54,000. The second one, there's an anticipated retirement of a music teacher at the elementary school. Currently, we have 3.4 music teachers. What the proposal would be, would be to 3.4 music teacher, increase that to a 1.0. So basically, instead of going from 3.4 music teachers, we'd go to three music teachers, and it would be a savings of $37,460. We don't think it would, it would not, by, by losing that 0.4 music teacher, we don't believe that there would be any significant impact into the ensembles that we're able to offer, or the, or the specials that would be delivered. The impact would probably, where the impact probably would be felt was the ability to offer individual lessons at the middle school. Not that we wouldn't be able to do that at all, but we would have that time reduced. And the third one was to reduce the amount of budget for a CHS position due to an anticipated retirement. That's just, you know, if we look at, this is what someone's retiring when they leave, and where we think we could probably hire that position at, we just kind of trimmed that, that salary down. So those three moves have a potential savings of, or an anticipated savings, I should say, of $111,689. The next round of changes that's talked in there is more significant, it's in terms of the structure of special education. So the current scenario, what we have right now is we have three educational team leaders in the budget, one is in each building. There are three ETL stipends that go along with that, so ETLs get a, also get a stipend similar to a department chair. And there's currently a 0.5 special ed secretary that exists in the budget, that was part of, if you remember, we had a position in the FY '18 budget that was 0.5 sped secretary, 0.5 data specialist. And what we did is, in this new budget, we increased it to make it a 1.0 data specialist, but that 0.5 sped secretary was still in the budget, we didn't eliminate that part. So while we looked at this, and we were proposing two new scenarios potentially. One scenario would be to replace the three ETLs with one assistant director of special education. Change the three ETL stipends to building-based department chair stipends, so that there would still be a teacher who was basically sort of the department chair for each building, who could help coordinate the building-based management, things like liaison lists, help with MCAS accommodations, those types of things that, that kind of need to be done a little more at the building level. And then change the 0.5 secretary to a 1.0 using, but that would be using the pre-k slash daycare revolving, basically the, the position that we created earlier this year that was sort of vacated by, when Nicole left. So basically, trying to take that, so that pre-k registrar position, making that more of the duties that that secretary would, would also, you know, cover, and that way there would be one full-time position there. The second scenario, that saving, there would be an anticipated savings, making that change of $115,000. The scenario two would be to replace the three ETLs with one director of pupil services. The difference with the director of pupil services, now you're, now you're kind of creating a, a position that is probably more comparable to someone like, it's more of like an assistant superintendent type position, not necessarily, but more of that level, where you would sort of oversee special education, but also be able to oversee other of our special populations like English language learners, 504 plans, and Title I. One of the benefits of that, I believe, is that it does two things. One of the things we One of the things we talked about from the very beginning when I came here was that, and over the summer, it's an admin team, was that when you look around our admin table, we really don't have a, someone in charge of our English language learners, who's like dedic, you know, who's, who's really, each principal's advocating for their building, and they have that, and it's not that they're not advocating for those students, but unlike special ed, we had someone who was specifically in charge of special ed, we didn't have that administrative level representation really for that, that group. Then the remainder of that proposal would stay the same. The idea is that other position would probably be a slightly higher paying position than the assistant director of special education due to the responsibilities, so anticipated savings might be about $90,000. Those are two scenarios, you know, and we can, certainly, I can take any questions that you have on those, and I just don't know, I don't know how the committee feels about either one, if you feel strongly about either one. I know, like I said, I apologize that we had a meeting today to try to review a lot of this stuff, so that's why it's coming to you right now, and I apologize for not being able to get it to you a few days ago.
Questions?
Do you have a preference? And I, I know I shouldn't put you on the spot for a while.
And if not you specifically, does the admin team, are they leaning one way or another?
I don't know. I mean, I think that, you know, I think through some of our conversations, I think that the, the director, going to the director of pupil services was one that seemed to be received favorably, because, you know, I think because of a few reasons, but one of the most glaring ones is, without that, then we have to still come up with some solution to, how are we going to make sure we better serve our English language learner population? And I think if we kind of move in this other direction, then we are able to sort of, sort of adjust that. So those are, you know, so I think that's, you know, that's, that is that, you know, there's, there is the, the, I guess the other factor that really should be sort of noted in here, and I know I talked to Kathy this afternoon, but I know, you know, Kathy as the, as a special ed director is, you know, leaning towards retirement in the not very distant future. So it's one of those things where I don't anticipate that it would necessarily be an overlap of those two positions forever. It would be one of those things, there would be an overlap for a while, and then as, as we, when Kathy decides to retire, then we're able to figure out, how do we need to go moving forward at that point? So I don't think that, I think there's also, and I, you know, I don't want to, sorry Kathy, I'm trying to put you, put you on the spot with that, but it's just sort of, I think it's just something to consider when you really want to get the whole picture, because it's not just we're, you know, going to add another $100,000 admin position, and then have, you know, it, it might be that for another year or two, and then we'll see where, how we want to best move forward after that.
I think if we can define the period of overlap, if that's a possibility, because I do think overlap is critical when there's, anytime there's a, a new role, being able to learn from the people that have been doing a good job at it currently, I think that's so valuable as opposed to just be, you know, one out, a new person in. So if there, if there is an opportunity for, for that, that overlap, I, I think that that's beneficial, but I think we just need to have an idea of how long, because we don't want to do this, and then the overlap ends up being like six years, you know what I mean? Like, we, we have to have an idea of how, how long the, the overlap is going to be.
And I, and, you know, I won't, I won't comment on any specifics on that right now, but I just, I do know that that, both of these scenarios, that is part of the, the thought process behind it, is to sort of understand that there is going to be a transition in the, in the relatively near future, and that by providing the sort of overlap, redundancy, whatever you want to say, it's really allowing that transition so that you can have that, that smooth handoff with, with things. So, you know, if we can, I don't know, if you guys feel comfortable, kind of...
I have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Under, so under number one, a current scenario, A and B the same thing, or?
They're the same people.
Okay.
Okay, but the way it works is that they, so they get their regular teaching salary, then they get an additional stipend on top of that. So I guess my point of referencing that is because then we can maintain a building-based department chair stipend, and it's not like it's additional money in the budget. Those are budgeted in there right now anyway.
Sure.
So what you're saving is, you know, you're saving the, you know, 230,000 or whatever it is in salary, or 220 something thousand in salary, and then replacing it with basically one salary, you know, somewhere else. So, and actually, it's not going to, it, it probably would not be that high of a salary savings because of the, if the ETL positions were to be eliminated, it doesn't necessarily mean that there's, that, it's like those ETLs lose their jobs. I mean, that's not the, so it's not that you can necessarily say like that's, that's the number, so.
Any other questions?
So, are, you're not asking us to choose one scenario versus another, are you?
Well, I mean, at some point, I got to move forward with one of my goals, to present you with a, with a budget for, for next time. I mean, if you want to just, you know.
Yeah, no, I, so I think, you know, you've exercised due diligence in bringing the potential changes to us. I, I think to Mr. Bailey's point, if, if, if you and the team feel that there's one direction versus another that is in the, you know, the best short and long-term interest of, of the school district, then I can support that.
Okay. All right. So I'll, I'll work with the team, we'll come back at it, and then, like I said, our goal is still, my goal is hopefully that we're going to, on March 13th, have a budget, like packet to hand you. Then we'll talk about any of these type of changes, it'll have a nice little letter from, from me to the community, it'll talk about staffing changes, it'll talk about our strategy, it'll talk about our, have our budget in it, it might have some data, some grant stuff. So we'll try to get all that together for the next meeting. And so that we'll, as a team, we'll meet, we'll talk, we'll discuss this, and we'll try to figure out the direction we want to go, and then that document we give you on that, that day will reflect that, and we can see, we can see where we want to go from there. So as you can see though, if we, the, the changes at the top, are those any changes that there are major concerns with? I mean, the third one's pretty much a no-brainer, number three at the top. Number one, I mean, that was a position, that was a new position we were trying to add, so it's a, you know, if we, if, if that's something that we need to maybe wait a year on, that's, that's okay. I think we can still consider, because it is more of a career vocational type thing, it might be something we can continue to try to pursue, like Perkins money, and, and those types of aspects, to maybe try to salvage something in that area as we go forward. And then the other one would be the, you know, the music one, which I know can, can be something that is a, you know, a, a hot button issue, but I don't think it's, you know, we're not trying to eliminate any, so we're not trying to eliminate any ensembles or take music away from any kids, like any kids would still, still be getting the, what they're getting, so. Okay, so if we, yeah.
No, I don't, I, my only question is if the 0.4 is going to a 1, wouldn't that make it a 4 instead of a 3?
No, because...
Because one's retiring.
3.4 becomes 2.4.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, thank you.
I'm from the math department.
Well, it's a point 2 to 1, if you take 0.4, maybe.
It's an honest question.
Brenny.
All right. Then the last thing we do have, you know, I put on the bottom just a note, other positions to consider potentially using school choice. I know there has been some talk about athletic director, I didn't know if we wanted to kind of still sort of hash that out as sort of an athletic director, community alumni liaison, something like that. Look at a potential job description for that. If we were going to fund a position like that, I would suggest that we fund it out of like a school choice, so that we're not asking the town to, you know, not including that in our main operating budget, and it's something that we would be able to see if it works or doesn't work. So that's something that, you know, I, I'm including that on this list because I know that we, that discussion has come up in our previous conversations. The other one is, is, is a school resource officer, and I don't know if that's something that, I just kind of threw that down, I think, you know, I'm not trying to overreact to anything that has just happened, and we'll kind of address some of that stuff later. But I do know that in my previous, previous two districts I worked in, we had a school resource officer that we had it in agreement with the town, and we, and we kind of cost shared it, and it really seemed to be a win-win for both of us, and I think it even helps the schools, because I think, you know, I think particularly in the middle school, when you have a, a police officer that's around all the time, little, little itty-bitty like bullying problems that tend to grow and grow and grow, and we don't get the police involved till they're this big, because we got to bother them. When you have a police officer that's there every day, you get them involved when they're this big, and you stop them from getting that big. So I think sometimes it, it does pay dividends. That would be something that I think we would have to, you know, we'd have to have obviously more conversations, I'd have to have a conversation with the, the chief of police, and then probably town administrator, and see what, what their thoughts were on something like that, working out potential ballpark numbers or anything. So I don't, I don't think we're ready to do anything with that one right now, but I just figured I would at least present it and say, you know, if you guys, if you're okay with it, I'll at least kind of maybe have some of those conversations to at least figure out what would this look like, and is it something that we, we would want to pursue, at least so we have the information? Does that sound, does that sound okay to do that?
I agree.
I'm definitely in favor of a school resource officer.
I'm sorry, yeah, at least open the conversation now, because it's not something that's going to happen overnight, but waiting, you know, makes it longer, yeah.
Right, so if I can at least...
A lot of people, like you just hit on, you're going to have to...
Right, you're going to have to look and say, how much would this cost? You know, I know in our agreement that we worked it out for a school resource officer in Athol, it was based on, you know, the police had their own system for figuring out who got what shift and who did that. So we didn't actually pay based on who got our, who our school resource officer was. Our cost share was based on the cost of their, their new addition, you know what I mean? So that, that was, so we can make it affordable and reasonable. It was, you know, obviously, we only paid a portion of the salary, I think we only paid 50% of the salary. What was nice about that was, was kind of a win-win too, because over the summer, when police might want to use vacation time or anything like that, they kind of had an extra body. And when, even during the day during the school year, if something big was going down in town, they've got someone ready, they call as backup, that can just kind of leave the school and go if there's a, a major event. The other plus that we had was, we were able to work some flexibility, in the agreement, we were able to work flexibility into the shifts for the SRO. So anything like homecoming dance, or prom, or Friday night football game even, you kind of work it out during the day that, okay, you're only going to work, you know, you're going to come in this morning, you're going to leave at noon, but you're coming back to the game tonight. And now, you know, it's one less detail you had to pay, and it's also somebody who's there that, that is around the kids all the time, it's going to be able to kind of, you know, know, maybe help pick up a little more if something's not quite right with somebody, so.
Stevie, and you kind of hit on it with, with the athletic director job, but any of the, I know there was another one, that any of the new created, could you give us a job description along with the budget, just?
Yeah, so, it might not be a fully, yeah.
I know the athletic director is one of the ones that is kind of a stipend too, so you got to be in the process of doing that as part of the contract, but just so that, you know, like, and I know there was, oh, the dean of students, like something.
Right, right.
Rather than, you know, if you just gave it to us with the budget, and if, you know, we had any questions on new jobs, we'd pretty much answer ourselves.
So it might not be a full, fully fleshed out, a formal job description, but when I do the little budget, I can try to give at least a blurb of defining the, the broad scope of the duty.
Kind of what you just did with the resource officer, something like that would be good read.
Okay.
I don't know about the rest of it, I just need something.
We've talked before at this table about, you know, having some detail in terms of what those positions are and are not, so.
Yeah, yeah, so we can, I can...
Just kind of like, just a simple...
Yeah, but I think, I mean, and I, and I think that'll be the whole point of the, of that kind of budget packet or budget presentation will be to provide clarity so that someone could pick it up and flip through it and know, hopefully have a sense when they're done reading it, like, oh, this is what they're doing, and this is what the schools are going to look like next year. And it's not going to be, you know, so having to provide some context as to what does this mean is certainly part of that process.
Thanks.
Is the school resource officer traditionally, like, is it the same person, or is it like one, just a position, and then it kind of gets rotated with like, like four or five different police officers, depending on?
In my experience, in the, in the two towns where I've worked with a school resource officer, it was one officer who was assigned, who, that was their shift, they were on a, they were on a shift that was right around, you know, it was our, you know, like seven to three, or whatever it was, 7:15 to 3:15 or something was their shift. They were pretty much, every day, they were kind of around the dismissal, or around that arrival, around the dismissal, able to make the rounds during the day for, you know, checking on lunches, checking with kids, and then in between those periods, they were, you know, able to be called in on any situation that came up. So I think that, you know, I mean, I think it's something that, you know, it's, like I said, I, can it happen for next year? I don't know, we'll have to see. But at least, I think, might as well start the conversation, talk to the chief, talk to the town administrator, and see what they'd like to see, and that kind of stuff. And we can revisit this a little more, later in the agenda, I'll talk about another handout I gave you.
Okay. Thanks.
The other thing under budget update, there was enrollment and out-of-district placements. So this is just, there is a, you know, we have to file a school attending children report. I say we, Mary, Mary does a great job putting together our school attending children report. And so that's, that's included in here, that's what she's had to submit. And you can see some of the other documentation in here, it tells you how many kids go to different, you know, the different, different public schools, private schools, collaboratives, you know, vocational charter schools, all that kind of stuff, where the kids choice in from. You can see a final count of sort of enrollment by grade, all that kind of stuff, how many are school choice in each grade. So there's, there's a lot of information there. I just wanted to, to share it with you, since we had to, had to compile it, we do try to keep an update on that. Particularly for the out-of-district placements, I know that that's something that Karen and Kathy have been looking into, and looking into not only this year, but how that projects to next year, just so we make sure we're keeping a, an idea on that. You know, I think we've had a couple additional kids that we've sort of referred this year, that we know that are, those numbers are going up. But I know talking to Kathy today, there's a couple of kids who we maybe weren't sure if they were going to graduate or not, who it appears that's, a couple of them might be, which is going to take down that, that original estimate. So we're sort of working on that, just to make sure that, you know, obviously, we want that special education estimate to be the, the best it can moving forward, so we'll just try to monitor that, and we can get you some more detail on that. When we kind of put the budget together, if we have to make any major changes to that, we'll let you know.
So because we don't have an agreement per se with ASABET, we have, we're not considered part of vocational technical regional schools, should we assume then that those kids fall under out-of-district public schools?
They are...
Which, which, which...
When are you going to...
So in grades nine through 12.
Is that the DESE report?
Yeah.
Right, so they are not listed as vocational regional technical schools because they are not, because we're not a part of the region.
Right.
So they would be in the out-of-district public schools, which is why you see that high number in like grades nine, 10, 11, 12, because about, you know, 25 of those roughly are in, in ASABET.
So, so just so that the board's clear.
And I should, and actually, I got it, this reminded me, I got an email over break from the superintendent of ASABET, because I did send out the letter in December about trying to work together towards maybe making some sort of intermunicipal agreement. And they responded that they, you know, I sent them some of our thoughts, they were, he sent back and said that, you know, they appreciated our thoughts, but there were some things that they thought they wanted to kind of share, maybe set up a meeting. So he got back to me over break about trying to maybe set up a meeting. So Joe, I think, I'll probably follow up with you on that, because that might be something that the two of us might be able to meet with.
Sure.
Their school committee chair and their superintendent director, and just sort of see, you know, just so we can, we can look forward in that. And then it was a topic when we did have the Masbo review that we brought up with them, and they thought it was a, that was the right avenue to pursue, is if you're not a member, at least try to see if you can get your, sort of an agreement between the towns.
So I bring it up only just so that, you know, everyone's clear that those numbers don't, don't represent out-of-district special ed placements necessarily.
Oh, yeah, they don't, they don't.
Any questions?
So then, the next thing, I just had a couple, couple grants, Project Lead the Way, we were awarded a Project Lead the Way grant, and that's to allow us to add some middle school programming for next year, it'll pay for the teacher training and the durable materials. So hopefully next year, we're going to be able to add a automation and robotics course, and also a, I never forget, it's like, I always want to call it engineering design, and that's not quite the word, it's design and modeling, or something like that, but it's, and that would probably be more for like the, design and modeling was more of of their introductory one, we'll probably target more of our sixth grade population. Automation and robotics, we're probably targeting more of like, the seventh and eighth. Ultimately, I think that one will end in the eighth grade. We also, in the grant, it's a three-year grant, so that the second phase of that grant is to add a course called App Creator, where you would actually, sort of our computers class would be looking at doing coding and creating apps and that kind of stuff, and that would be kind of targeted for more of the seventh grade. So you'd have, you know, ultimately, hopefully by the end of the three years of this grant, we would have teachers trained, and equipment purchased, durable equipment purchased, so that we could offer those three courses in sixth, seventh, and eighth. Initially, the plan is to offer them during the wind block, so that we can use them as sort of enrichment courses. And as we pilot them, and see how they go, and learn more about them, we can decide if we want to move them out of the wind block, and into part of the curriculum for everybody.
Can any of this grant be used towards the steam fair, or is it, is it pretty narrow-focused?
This is a pretty narrow-focused one, so it's a, you know, for, for the $20,000, you figure, you do the training, you do the, the training and the equipment, and it's pretty much, you know, pretty much sheets it up.
Doesn't hurt to ask, right?
The other thing is, I just want to, you know, we did, the NIPRO Foundation, we wrote to the NIPRO Foundation requesting $10,000 to get materials to start Makerspaces. We basically requested $5,000 to the elementary school, $5,000 to the middle school, and they approved it. So I was very, I was very grateful. I think it's a, that's a tremendous infusion of support for us, because it's something that is, you know, literally, I came, came in the office today, looked at my mailbox, and like, there was the check, you know? So it's an immediate thing that we're able to get going right now. And, you know, what does a Makerspace mean? We're ordering different things, programmable controllers, programmable robots, 3D printers, iPads, and like, green screen type materials, so that they can do some digital media type stuff. So really, just trying to, to get more of that into the younger levels, get that into the elementary school, into the, into the middle school. Once again, the idea is, probably, a lot of the primary utilization of that might be during the wind block, but it's also, the goal is hopefully to have that space available, so that teachers are able to access it to support their regular curriculum as well. So it's almost like, you know, maybe when, when you were in school, your teacher signed up for the computer lab, that now it'll be more of, we're signing up for like, the Makerspace, so that we can go do the coding and stuff, so.
Do we have any ideas for a location for Makerspaces, or is that-
I think right now, the, the small, since most of this is gonna be fairly clean, and mostly electronically oriented.
Yeah.
I think at the elementary school right now, they're gonna kind of set it up in part of the library area. Also, because that's where Mike McHecran's office is, so it'll be easy for troubleshooting and doing that.
Yeah.
At the middle school, was it the library still you were gonna focus on yours as well? So I think right now, the idea is to kind of put them in part of the library, because right now, what we're, what we're doing is mostly-
Electronic.
Electronic, it's not gonna be, you know-
Like those in blocks and-
Yeah, not, not huge machinery, yeah.
Machinery, right.
No circular saws yet.
Right.
So anyway, so we were able to get that. And then I, you know, I did write a, I did write an article that, I don't know if it's in the item or not, I didn't get it yet. But I did write a little article, to at least try to, to kind of thank some people, and kind of put this out together, because I think we have a nice, kind of continuum of things here. We have the, the, you know, the, the NIPRO Foundation helping us get this stuff going at the elementary school, and into the middle school. You've got the, the Project Lead the Way, which is gonna bolster some of those courses at the middle school level. We've got the Perkins Grant this year, that we're trying to get more of that career technology stuff going, at the career readiness stuff going at the high school. And then, also, on top of all that, you've got the Urban Agenda Grant, which is gonna do the feasibility study, looking at the fire station. So I think, you know, you really have got that continuum from, from elementary school all the way through, of trying to-
For steps to brilliance.
And footsteps to brilliance, really, from the pre-K, to try to, try to get people in there. So I think, I think we've really tried to hit, you know, different areas, and really tried to build that, that through line of definitely infusing some technology, and hopefully helping with digital literacy and those types of things.
Thank you.
So, under facilities, the CES cameras are up and running, and we actually had a training today, it was pretty cool. It was me and Rob, and also Miguel, Megan, two Clinton police officers were there. And we were, we were able to kind of go through and, and just learn how to play it back, and how to screen grab, and how to do all that kind of stuff. But they're really neat cameras, they're this, they're called these like fisheye cameras. So, you know, when you see on the screen, it might only look like it's, it's this big, but then you can just click it, and just start moving the mouse around, and it's like you're, you're pointing at every, you know, it's like, you're not really moving the camera, the camera's capturing it all, it's just kind of changing the view of what you're seeing. So they were really, really, the police department was really happy about that, the ability to do that. And we were part of the training today, we were able to get some of the configurations set up, so hopefully, what we should be able to do is, the police department should even be able to have, basically, a login, so that their like dispatcher could, could tap into it from their computer. We'll be able to do it from like, our, you know, I could put it on my work cellphone, so that I, we could check if there was anything like that. So we'd be able to, to monitor that. You got a nice view of the, the new playground structure, there's a lot of, a lot of things there. And pretty much, we have every exterior exit covered, so anywhere that there's the, the drop buster kindergarten, and pre-K, and the front door, and all that stuff. So, so I think it's, you know, it's definitely, I'd say the police were excited, they were, and they were like, you know, this is great, when are we gonna do it in the other two buildings? We're trying to do it next year, like, we're trying to, trying to get that in. So, so anyway, that was that. Fire station, I know we just kind of keep that on there, I mentioned it sort of like, yeah, sorry.
You kind of hit on it there. I know you've looked, I'd like to take a look at it, maybe when I come down for that other meeting, if you just kind of showed me around. But so, I know we, we talked about that for a warrant article, so you recommend, I mean, you've seen it now, that's the one we want for these other schools.
I think it'll work great, yeah. So I think-
I know we waited to make sure it was all-
Right, because we had the three different quotes, right? And when I told the, when I told the officers today how much we paid for it, they were like, you got all this for that? They were like, why aren't you doing that in the other schools? I'm like, well, we're gonna try to. So the, so, you know, we do have, so we have, the way it's in the budget right now, is I kept enough money for one school in our operating budget, and one school is in the warrant article. So the idea is, if for some reason, the warrant article were to not pass, if our operating budget passed, we would still be able to at least move with one more school next year. And then we could go from there. And then we also could look into, you know, this year, it wasn't in the budget, we pulled it from rental facilities, we could always look at where those accounts stand at some point, if we needed to, to pull the trigger on something. But, I also feel like, you know, I know that the, you said the, the officers were excited, they asked, you know, we talked to them, told them that part of it was gonna be in a warrant article, and they even said, hey, if you need help getting support for your warrant articles, let us know, because we support that. So I think that that's, you know, that's a, that's, you know, I think that's a positive thing. I think that's part of the whole idea of that second article, that we kind of mentioned, or the third article, whatever, that the, the safety and security one, it's really looking at like, the fire panel, the cameras, hopefully the stuff that the emergency management needs. And that way, we can try to, you know, I think that's one that people are gonna, would be willing to get behind.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Thanks. Great work.
Fire station, I don't have much of an update besides the Urban Agenda Grant, I just know we like to keep it on there.
Yeah, when's the, is there any talk of the feasibility study?
I don't know, I don't know yet. I do know that, I think Paul, Phil, and I are scheduled-
Tuesday.
Tuesday the 6th?
Yeah.
That's next Tuesday, huh? That's, this coming up, wow. Tuesday the 6th, we're scheduled to go look at, what's it called, Technicopia?
Yeah.
In Worcester, it's a Makerspace in Worcester. And they're supposed to be part of our, they were named in the grant actually, as part of our consultant from the feasibility aspect of the Makerspace model.
Okay.
And then, I don't know where we stand, I'll have to talk to Phil about, I don't know if we have to go to the building committee or not, probably not, because it's not over 50,000, but we're gonna have to probably do an RFP for the feasibility study, to get that bid out. So I'll check, I'll follow up with Phil to see where we are in that process, because we want to get that ball rolling as well.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I think that's it, I just put other in there, because I was going on vacation, so.
Okay. So, we're on to, we're on to, me, okay. Thank you, I'd like to thank the committee for, you know, contributions to your mid-year evaluation, and giving a copy to everyone. And I'll just read from the overall summative report. Comments on Dr. Meyer's overall performance were complimentary, citing examples of his strong communication skills, his organization, follow-through, and attention to detail, as well as his professionalism. The level of detail provided by Dr. Meyer in the form of tangible evidence and data informed the school committee's assessment of these mid-year ratings, resulting in performance ratings of proficient across all performance standards. Specific comments included the thoughtful attention he has paid to building relationships with various school district stakeholders, as well as the communication he has shared with the school committee. Dr. Meyer has crafted a detailed entry plan, shared his entry plan findings, and used that document and data as the baseline in facilitating a multi-year strategic improvement plan. The value of this attention to detail cannot be understated in the long-term trajectory of the Clinton Public Schools. Dr. Meyer has crafted thoughtful and challenging professional and student learning goals, as well as district improvement goals. He has provided evidence that he is on his way to meeting, if not exceeding, these goals. Dr. Meyer has established a strong culture of shared vision and mission with his administrative team, and with town and community stakeholders as well. We believe these relationships and growing partnerships speak to his leadership style and the potential for shared ownership of the schools. Dr. Meyer's academic leadership has been noted, as well, his partnership with building principals to capture academic time through creative scheduling has led to new opportunities for individual student success and growth. Dr. Meyer has demonstrated a strong commitment to Clinton Public Schools and to the town of Clinton. His transition into the role has been extraordinary. All right. Well done, sir.
Well written.
It's important to note that this is just a mid-year evaluation, and that were things to change, we reserve the right, right accordingly. But, you know, hopefully, this is an accurate summation of the individual school committee findings that have been prepared for you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anything from the policy subcommittee? I know Mr. McIntyre can't be here tonight, because he is celebrating the birth of his new son, so congratulations to Mike, to Chrissy, and to their-
Rocco?
Rocco, Rocco McIntyre.
Yeah, so we had the policy, because the subcommittee has not met since I was-
Sure. Do we, is there anything new from the marketing subcommittee?
No, I don't believe we've met since our last meeting either.
Okay. Just, Paul, how are we doing on the video, fingers crossed?
Clock one says the deadline.
All right.
He still might be in the room working on it.
[laughing]
Nilda, how's the video coming?
It's great.
She knows, she knows just to give that answer regardless.
Nilda herself is an AI, it's coming along well.
All right.
Hit the deadline.
So that was the video for the Leading the Nation campaign, we were trying to get in, we have to submit those by the end of the month, so.
Five o'clock one says.
So, that's good. Under old business, the calendar, the last thing we, oh, sorry, are you okay if I move on to old business?
I was gonna say, under old business, we have the calendar, so by all means.
Take over on that. The calendar, the only real last minute question mark we had was the professional development day. So originally, if you remember, we had a full day, Professional Development Day, November 6th. I have handed out a new copy of that to you. We kind of looked at the calendar, tried to see where it might make sense to break it up, looked at different things, talked to the principals this morning. And one of the things that we, we thought January 2nd would be a good day to put that, that date. It kind of, it extends the break for the families, so it's not really like, you know, a random day off, it's something that you can kind of plan on. But it allows us to bring our staff in and kind of, sort of reset, and reignite the, you know, it's almost like the first day of school over again, kind of after that, after the, after the holiday break. So, we figured, and still, but we figured it's still early enough in the year that you can have some meaningful impact with the work you do on that day. So, so that's, that's where we decided that we would, we would probably like to, like to put that date. So, if everyone is, is comfortable with, with this calendar, then you could make a motion to approve it.
Well, so we'll ask for a motion to approve it, and then have discussion afterwards, but can I have a motion to accept the calendar as amended?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Steve, could you just add two things on there, the two grad, the high school graduation in the eighth grade, graduation as I would call it, just so it's on the, you put this on the website, right?
Right, so just like, maybe make a note on the sheet of when they are-
Yeah, yeah.
High school graduation, we can pin the date down, but middle school graduation's
contingent upon how many snow days we have, right? Mrs. Sergeant?
Mrs. Sergeant, is middle, eighth grade step up, is that contingent on snow days? Does that change every year?
It is, it's definitely based on snow days. Right now, it's on, it'll be a Thursday night, so please, no more snow days.
And it's, it's generally, what, the night before the last day of school?
Yes.
Okay.
So even if we made a note on that, that said that high school graduation is the first Saturday in June, or whatever, and the, or second, whichever one it is, and that-
That's why I was asking, I don't know.
Yeah, so we can at least, whether we, whether we actually highlight them on there, or maybe just make a note at the bottom, yeah.
Yeah, the Thursday before the last day, just on this kind of place.
That sounds good.
Anything else on the calendar? There being no further discussion, all those in favor of accepting the calendar as amended? Unanimous, thank you very much. Under new business, anything?
So I did have one other handout I gave you, it's on a, I just put a school safety plan of action, this is a draft of something I put together today. But I think what's important to note is that this, the school safety plan of action is not, this isn't stuff that's new, a lot of it is just encompassing things that we've been working on throughout the year. There are some aspects that are new, but there are some aspects that also encompass our work during the year. So I think, you know, I just want to be clear that, you know, obviously, we live in a, you know, we live in a time where there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions about, about, there's a lot of sense of vulnerability, I'd say. Not only in schools, but just sort of in, in public, and any sort of large gathering, there's, there's a lot of these, a lot of concerns. So, you know, we tried to look, and I tried to think about, oh, how do we, how do we do this? You know, the first part of it, really planning, you know, we had, the safety committee has been meeting this year. I think that, that committee might have been on a little bit of a hiatus, but we were able to kind of resurrect that. So it's important, I think people know that we do meet with the Clinton Police Department, Clinton Fire Department. Other stakeholders are invited as, as necessary, school members are on that committee, principals are on that committee. And, you know, we've had the bus company come to a meeting, I know one of our next ones, we found out having, you know, our nurse leader come to that meeting, so we can discuss things like AEDs, and those types of things. So we do have that safety committee meeting. And then, obviously, the school committee, you guys would approve any of the policies, and obviously, the budget items to support those policies. So discussions we might have, like, school resource officer, or any of those types of things that we had earlier, those are things that we would make those decisions, you know, we'd have to plan for those decisions. Protect, I just think it's, you know, something that should be noted, this came up at our last safety committee meeting, was that we are planning on having educators attend an ALICE training on March 7th and 8th. That training is offered at Quabin. And right now, we have three administrators signed up to attend that training. Officer Sylvester is not gonna attend that training, because he has attended one previously, and was able to renew his training, but still, he's obviously anxious to work with, with our administrators, once they kind of get the training. And, and that was something that, although the training's happening, you know, next week, and it was something that was, had been discussed and planned months ago. And obviously, the security cameras been installed at the elementary school, with middle school, and high school security cameras budget for next year. Reason why that is significant is because part of the, part of the ALICE program is going to call for, and I, I should have written down the acronym for ALICE, I'm not gonna remember, do you have it?
It's Alert Lockdown Inform Counter and Evacuate.
Evacuate. So, part of, so it's basically the, the next generation of lockdown, right? So the first response, when the first, first iteration of how do we handle these things, it was hide. And then, even now, it's still kind of, okay, you can go into sort of a lockdown mode, and you can try, but if you have the opportunity to escape, you should escape. Or if someone comes into, you know, if, if your, if your hiding spot is compromised, you should, you should have a counter plan. So part of what facilitates that ALICE program is the ability to have that, you know, intelligence, for lack of a better word, of the cameras, and knowing where there is a threat, where there isn't a threat, be able to then communicate with your staff over an intercom, or anything else like that, to inform people where the threat is. We were talking about today, in the elementary school, the elementary school has four floors. So, if I can tell you that someone's on the third floor, we could probably get every kindergartner out of the kindergarten hallway, and over to the fire station, before anyone could, could get down there. So, you know, there's a lot of things like that, that are informed in that. Educate, you know, I think that's another key part. We did get awarded a Safe and Supportive Schools Grant this year. Part of what we might try to use that for is, Mrs. Sergeant and I were talking about trying to schedule Rachel's Challenge, I know you've been working on that with, with the police department. Rachel's Challenge, if you're not familiar with Rachel's Challenge, it's, Rachel was a victim of the Columbine shootings, and they come to the school, they do a presentation on that, and they, they actually form a, they kind of do a, a group in the, they do a school assembly, they also do like, a parent assembly in the evening. It also- do like, a parent assembly in the evening. It also has some follow-up, sort of like a friend, it's called Friends of Rachel. It's like a club that's sort of a follow-up. So that's something that we've been, we've discussed previously to recent events, that it's, it's something that, that working with the police department has come up. We are looking at, something that would be new, is looking at trying to do assemblies on March 14th, definitely at the high school, possibly at the middle school, to review ways to keep safe, how to report information, and how students can, can maybe advocate for themselves. So, and parentheses, I put sort of a walk-in. So if you've heard, there's been a lot of national attention on different things. Obviously, the most recent school shooting was, was very, was, was one of the worst that we've had, right? So unfortunately, we live in a time where a lot of these school shootings have become very commonplace. And it's almost like, the, some of these smaller ones that are happening aren't even really a blip on people's radar. But the, you know, it seems like this most recent one has actually got some people's attention. And it seems that the, March 14th, I know, is one month after the, the Parkland incident, and that there was some, you know, cause to sort of do some sort of, either walkout or, or something like that to draw attention to it. Most people are calling for some sort of like, 17-minute walkout for the honor of the 17 victims. There's also another date, which is October 20, uh, sorry, April 20th, which is the anniversary of the Columbine shootings. We'll actually, Massachusetts schools will pretty much all be on break during the April 20th one. We're anticipating that most students that are going to want to participate are going to want to participate in the March 14th. And actually, even, you know, even this evening, talking with Mr. Hastings, there's a lot of the mid-watch principals and everyone are already talking about this, and sort of different things they're trying to do. And most schools are trying to do something similar to what we're going to try to do, which is, is essentially, support sort of the opportunity to have this voice heard. And almost uses an opportunity to try to have a conversation with students about, you know, one, how can you help keep, what can you do, right? What can you do in terms of, you know, if someone's at the back door and they knock and say, "Hey, man, can you let me in?" Don't let them in, you know, and tell them to go around. If, if someone said, posts something on, you know, a social media platform, who do you report it to? And then, also, how to advocate for themselves, you know? And I don't think, our goal is not to, to push any type of political agenda, but it's to sort of teach students, you know, what avenues they might have to explore that, you know, civic engagement, civic education.
Yeah.
And then, the last part, you know, I said, advocate. And it's sort of, I think we're going to try to look to schedule a community forum with local politicians. We have reached out to Representative Naughton's office, and we're scheduled to speak with him tomorrow about trying to discuss a date. And I think the vision for that might be to have that in the evening, so it can be open to parents as well. And potentially, what we could do is almost use that, an opportunity with the students on the 14th during the day, to help prepare them to maybe organize their thoughts and questions that they might want to come ask politicians, or police officers, or school officials at a community event, either that evening, or a couple days later, or something like that. So I think that that's, that's sort of our approach. And, and then I think, the reason I made it sort of a circle is because I figured, you know, that advocacy and whatever kind of happens after that, then sort of drives now your planning for the future, right? And then you got to kind of keep revolving. I mean, these things happen all the time. Not that they happen all the time, but every time these things happen, we need to learn from what, what was the, what was the lesson learned. And, and over the years, there's been a lot of that, you know, the, "Don't respond when they pull the fire alarm," or "Don't do this," or "Don't do that." Why? Because we learned that, unfortunately, in some instance, when this happened, and this caused this, triggered this response, it didn't end well. So, so that's, you know, I think we're just trying to, to learn and continually improve. And I think that that's, you know, I think we're going to try to, try to follow this and map this out, so.
I just want to say, thank you for sharing this. A lot of, a lot of the elements of, of, you know, this synopsis you've shared with us, you know, in terms of, this is already in process, or we're working toward this, or, and so, you know, I think it's important to come back to the idea that, that, you know, school safety is an ongoing process. And, you know, I appreciate your willingness, the willingness on the part of the team, to continually look at, you know, what we do well, and where we can be better, and to learn from, you know, first responders and working in partnership with them. And, and, you know, I, I am, you know, as a parent, I, you know, I, I'm grateful to be able to send my child to a place where I, I know that they will be cared for, not only in a physically safe environment, but an emotionally safe one. And that's a challenge, too, I think, in, in trying to, you know, always strike that balance between, you know, an optimally physically safe environment, and an emotionally safe one, where everyone is valued and can learn, and, and not have to be, you know, caught up in a lot of worries about a lot of different things that shouldn't have anything to do with school. So, thank you.
And I, I really like the idea of walk-in, as opposed to, you know, walkout's great, and that, you know, want to bring attention to something. But I think we have an opportunity to maybe do something a little bit more constructive.
Agreed.
And I think there, you know, there's, I'm assuming there's probably going to be some students that would like to take some action. I just think we have an obligation to, like, like Dr. Meyer said, not tell them what to do, but to present them some paths forward on like, what, because, you know, you're 15, 16-year-old kid, you might want to do something. But, I mean, you just, you know, might not know. But like, we can, at these assemblies, you know, we can talk to them about, you know, like, actually doing constructive things, if you want to try to make like, a change, like, like writing to, you know, writing to congressmen, making phone calls, organizing-
How do you write that letter?
Exactly. To whom do you write it? Things, things of that nature. So that, some of this frustration can hopefully get, you know-
Channeled.
-channeled into something like positive.
Yeah. Yeah. I will say that, you know, in my other role as an educator, I, I'm not in favor of a protest of just, it's sort of an empty protest of getting up and just leaving.
Right.
Because I don't know that you get anywhere with that. And I know that that's not the full extent of it. But, but the idea of, you know, an organized anarchy, I, I think, you know, I, I'm absolutely in favor of students having their voice, being empowered to use their voice, and, and having ways to learn how to use that in productive ways, that, that will create a groundswell of, of, of giving them an opportunity for advocacy, you know, wherever their position may be. So again, I commend, you know, I commend you and the team for, for coming up with, I think, a creative response to, to fill a need. All right. Anything else under New Business?
We've got to congratulate Mike McIntyre on the birth of his child, right?
Indeed, we do. Indeed, we do.
And also, I don't know what the weather's going to be like, but the next warm day, I'll be sporting this at the town hall.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Most well-dressed man at a town hall.
Thank you, First Team 126, and, and good luck with-
Yes, WPI this weekend.
Good luck at WPI.
Does it say on the shirt, does it?
What?
WPI?
We, under-
We do not, we do not have to go to executive session.
We do not.
No, because we, we haven't really had a, we haven't had a meeting with them since last.
All right, so, thank you. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Anyone opposed to adjourn?
I am not.
We stand in-
Just send it to the table.
We stand in adjournment. Thank you, everyone.